Mr. Himmelberger.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. I am going to defer the actual reading of the names to our vice principal at the high school, Mr. Nugent, because he's much more familiar with the names and can do them justice. But I just wanted to offer my congratulations to these thirty-seven high school seniors who have qualified for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. If they choose to go to certain Massachusetts colleges and universities, they are eligible for a tuition waiver, which can be a substantial award over four years, and it's proof of their hard work. So without further ado, I would like Mr. Nugent to come forward and read the thirty-seven winners.
Thirty-seven.
Welcome, Mr. Nugent.
Thank you. I do believe that I'm gonna be up here three times, so I apologize to anyone at home watching, on hi-def. Just to, um, we are very proud of our thirty-seven students, and just to reiterate what the scholarship is all about. The John and Abigail Adams Scholarship provides a tuition waiver for eight semesters of undergraduate education at the Massachusetts State School University. The scholarship covers tuition only; fees and room and board are not included. In order for a student to qualify, they would need to score either both advanced on the math and English, or one advanced and one proficient, and their skill score has to be within the top twenty-five percent of the graduating class. These students are Caitlin Androwski, Kyle Brady, Nicole Brogna, Joanna Burke, Tabitha Kopnder, Ashley Cummings, Joseph Degnalt, Kayla Degnan, Heather DeMers, Tyler Downing, Ethan Doian, Amanda Farekia, Monique Farekia, Haley Ford, Brittany Franks, Xavier Giles, Chelsea Green, Adam Hasey, Cassandra Holden, Corey Levitt, Taber Malbath, Rebecca Manning, Emily Maynard, Melissa McNichols, Erin McWay, John Milos, Jane Nelson, Kelly Nguyen, Sean Nystrom, Kelsey Ann Poth, Matthew Rice, Margaret Rizzo, Nicole St. Jean, Nicole Stockhouse, uh, Nicholas Stockhouse, sorry, Anthony Voe, Derek Weagle, and Abigail Woodward. Those are our thirty-seven. So congratulations to those students.
Certainly, congratulations to all.
To practice for the graduation as well, reading those names.
There you go, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the committee? Mrs. Ennis?
I would just say if we can post them online and on the cable channel, please. Okay.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Moving on, we have the approval of minutes from September twenty-seventh. Can we entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, can we put that to a vote, please?
Yes.
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 Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Wait, I abstained, I was not here, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have one abstention in that, please. And I also vote yes, thank you very much. Next, on to new business, we have the AM Chafee PTO fundraising request. Do we have a representative from?
Executive session, ma'am.
Executive session.
Oh, I apologize. We'll come back to that since I've already called him.
Sure.
I actually printed out everything that we, uh, when I support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And if you could please just identify yourself for the home office. What am I talking about?
Hold on one.
For the people at home.
Um, Cindy, Cindy Capuano, um, the Chafee School PTO president. Every year we do, um, different activities, and this is, um, now with the whole peanut allergy, we're actually looking for more donations than ever to help have the kids have parties that don't include any baked goods from home. The first one would be Polar Express. We're not sure right now if we're gonna even ask any, it would be a supermarket that we would ask, but we're not sure, we still have to, um, this is only first grade thing, so we're not sure on, um, what we're gonna get yet. And we have to figure out the peanut allergy in that class, but that is something that we may solicit funds for. The Ice Cream Social, um, this year, we can no longer take donations from the parents, so we're gonna, um, we are gonna go to stores to see, like Walmart and this, um, the supermarkets around town to get toppings for the ice cream. We also are asking Market Basket and Friendly's Ice Cream, well, we would like to ask Market Basket and Friendly's Ice Cream for ice cream donations. Bingo for Books, we usually get water donated by BJ's, but we're not sure on that either. That's just, I wanna put it in there, I don't wanna leave anything off. Family Fun Night is when we hit this around businesses to ask for gift certificates. In the past, um, we've also gotten, um, donations of pizza from the Pizza Post. We would like to ask them again. The different small businesses around town, we usually ask them for gift certificates for different services to raffle off that night. Staff appreciation while we're out, um, getting, um, sorry, I'm a little nervous. Donations for the Family Fun Night.
You're doing great.
We also ask for staff appreciation for the teachers to raffle off for them. Field Day, we usually do ice cream, and we, last year, we did get some donations from BJ's. Again, we're not sure about that, but we'd like to go that way again. And Author Day, um, last year, we did have baked goods, so I'm not sure what we're gonna do again this year, but that is not until June, but I didn't wanna leave that off. And then the last thing that's happening right now, and I wanted to put it in a few stores around town, a little jar with this on it. Any change, it's, um, One for Books. Every dollar that we get from this, we get to keep to purchase books for our school. I thought it would be a good idea if we could put it in local businesses, like maybe the couple Pizza Posts, anywhere that we know the people who run it. I wouldn't want anybody stealing this. So it would be very few businesses, um, around town, and just see if anybody can, if they're at the Pizza Post and, you know, they have change, if they wanna drop it in. It could be any amount of money, and that's just extra money that we can get for books for our school and for the teachers.
Very good.
And that is it.
Now, see how well you did? All right. Do we have any questions from the committee? Mrs. Ennis?
Just quickly, what kind of a peanut allergy population do you have? Is it significant?
Enough that we no longer do peanuts in our school.
We've got a few students with a very severe peanut allergy.
You do?
Where even exposure to.
Like they sit at a separate table at lunch and.
That could be an issue for a couple of our kids.
Okay.
And we do have them sitting separate at lunchtime.
So when there's birthdays and things like that, I know I'm going off track a little bit, but I'm just curious as how you're handling, like.
There, there's no longer food brought from home.
Nothing?
No.
Okay, so you've stopped it, okay.
Since the committee passed the wellness policy.
Right, right.
No food from home is being shared.
All right. And the, the little, who sponsors that? Who puts that up?
It's Books for One, it's Scholastics. We do a book fair for them. It's starting actually Monday, November first, and runs through the fifteenth.
Okay, and it's Books for One?
Well, it's Scholastics, but the, this is a donation for Book for One. For every dollar that we raise, we get to keep a hundred percent of it, and then Scholastics donates that same amount to needy people for books.
That's great. That's a great idea.
I believe the organization is also called Books, um, One for Books.
Okay, that's a great idea. Okay.
That's great.
So it's like a win-win for us.
Great. Mr. Peterson?
Let's see, how can I do this? I'll try to lump one and two into one. Your ice cream and your treats.
Ice cream toppings.
You're listing Friendly's, and personally I have a problem with that. Friendly's and Ben &amp; Jerry's are the worst ice creams in the country for you, um, as far as saturated fat, cholesterol, everything else. I only say that because I'm on the Wellness Committee, and I'm gonna get to Mr. Himmelberger at the end of the meeting, where we stand with our Wellness Committee. So some of these things, I don't know if they've been pre-approved. Mr. Yvonne, I'm sure you're aware of it and have our wellness policy, and I would assume or hope that it was all being run through you and not just at random going out soliciting certain donations for that type of food, okay?
Everything goes by him.
The other, the other thing is the businesses, I don't have any problem, you're the first one in it, it sounds like, this year, but all of our solicitations for town, you're here, are to go through us or be coordinated through the superintendent, because we have limited small businesses, we have very few businesses in town anymore, so we don't want every individual school or the Booster Club and everybody hitting the businesses at one time, because I got a couple calls the other day. Times are tight, and they're willing to support us with notices of such, and again, we don't have to, but I recommend and I would request that when you do outside solicitations in the community, Oxford has a policy that you're to report to the Police Department. They don't bother us too much, but it would be nice to check in and let them know that you're soliciting, when and, and how you're about to do it with the Police Department as a courtesy to them, please. They work with us pretty well. So that's basically my questions, and I just want the business solicitation monitored, I guess, by the Central Office and you, Mr. Yvonne, so that we aren't sending out five different schools, harming our businesses. Because the Oxards, as an example, does one fundraiser, one big fundraiser a year, and he doesn't wanna be bothered the rest of the year. So he closes the place down and has a spaghetti dinner for us and everything else, and they do some pretty good fundraising there, but he feels one Monday night, and what we get from that is enough without having five schools, the Boy Scouts, and everybody going to him. I only use that as an example because I'm sure Paul wouldn't mind. So other businesses are starting to fall under the same guidelines, and just be aware of that, okay? I have nothing against supporting everything you have on this list.
A good amount of what we'll be asking for are things that we've gotten in the past from, from these businesses.
From previous ones that you've dealt with before.
As we've been going through year after year, doing these events, the same folks have supported us, whether it's through an in-kind donation or a donation of time, the community has been wonderfully supportive.
Okay, Mrs. Dewitzek?
I think what you're asking here is a little different than probably what we're used to asking to come before us. It's not really fundraising, 'cause you're not going door-to-door, and you're not really standing out in front of a business soliciting for five or six hours. You're going and asking for a donation, which since the beginning of time, we have all done and pleaded with these organizations, and I know like Walmart will set up, and every time you come in, they may give you a twenty-five dollars, they used to, or anything when we were doing gift rend-. So I don't think it's that set to the policy. I'm glad you told us about it, but I have no problem with any of these, 'cause it's not really a fundraiser, it's not really a solicitation type thing, it's just, you're gonna ask for donations. Yep. And, and we've done that forever, and I think that falls outside of the fundraising policy.
It does.
So this has nothing to, uh, we're glad you let us know, 'cause it's always nice to know, but I don't see anything of like, I'm going to every Pizza Parlor, and I'm go- so, I'm, you know, I wish you luck, and I think that's great that you do this for the children.
One thing for Mr. Peterson, with the Ice Cream Social, we work it with the school cafeteria, or as I did last year.
Okay.
Still early, that they did not get a sugary snack.
Okay.
For lunch.
Go right ahead, Mr. Peterson.
And to Mrs. Dewitzek, I somewhat differ with you, because this is different, but any contribution or any solicitation of in-kind are tax deductible for these businesses, so they also monitor certain situations of that nature at this point in time. But I have no problem, and I would, I would move with that caveat to support this anyway, just to give them our support, as long as she's working with like the, the food services and the right kind of ice cream, et cetera.
Okay. It was my impression that this was really just for informational sources anyways.
Yeah.
And it was.
Oh, I agree. I support any fundraising efforts that, that the town so chooses to do through the school department. But again, I have to agree with Mrs. Dewitzek, this, this is really past our approval. You don't, you don't need our approval to do this, this is just, it's when if, if you had wanted to go to Walmart for the day and, and as Mrs. Dewitzek said, solicit for five hours, that's a different matter, well, I'm just saying, that's a different matter altogether. This is great stuff that the schools have done ad infinitum, this has been going on since I've, well, since I was a kid, and that's, oh, never mind, we don't.
If you did it, it's right.
No, so, that's right, so if we did it, it's right. But we appreciate your letting us know ahead of time. This is a great little informational source for us, so if anybody does ask us about anything, we've got it here.
I can update you by emails when I do.
And you certainly are welcome to do that. I'd love to, I'd love to hear what you're doing. So yeah, don't even think about it, just shoot me an email with what you're doing, let me know how it's going, what the results were, so I can update the committee with that, so that's great.
Okay.
So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
And we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have the Oxford High School Band Competition Request. Mr. Baggett, would you join us?
Good evening. I'm here to ask permission to take the band, the chorus, and the jazz band to Cleveland, Ohio in May for our, what has become our annual adjudication festival, where the music department gets rated by national and international standards and judges, and last few years, we've, uh, we've done quite well, bringing back gold medals left and right, and, um...
Sounds like someone else, doesn't he? Mr. Maisley.
Yeah, I know.
He'll have to speak for himself.
It's about the fan tonight, huh?
We, we haven't yet started measuring our trophy length.
That's very good.
But we'd like to have.
You should.
Permission to go ahead and do that and bring back further honors on the, the town. I can't speak highly enough about the quality of the kids that are in our program. Actually, I can, and so I will. Fifteen of the, of the names that were presented by Mr. Nugent have come through my department. And so I take full credit for all of that.
As you should.
Very good. Any questions from the committee?
What's the dates?
It was in May, but do you have the actual dates on that?
Uh, May twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth.
Now, is one of those involving an out-of-school day?
There are two of them, Thursday and Friday, the twelfth and thirteenth.
Okay.
As were the last couple of years.
Okay. Mrs. Ennis?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Everybody's second on that one. Yes.
Mrs. Cohen? We have a vote?
Yeah, yeah, just right down.
She's just going, she's just stuck.
Who wouldn't, right?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, and I hope you are able to come, compete with Commander Maisley and get one of those trophy cases, so.
We do share.
You've made us very proud, so we appreciate it.
We share a lot of the same students, so they, we feed on each other's programs quite
You should share some of the same.
Thank you.
Case out front, then.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
Very good. Thank you, sir, you're all set to go.
Best of luck.
Thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Have a great trip.
Uh, next, we're gonna ask Mr. Himmelberger to give us the analysis of the MCAS results.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. We have the administrative team here this evening so that we can present to the committee and to the folks at home the results of our MCAS from spring of 2010. And as we go through here, I think you'll be able to see that we really have some work to do. As, as everyone knows, we're still operating under a piece of legislation that in the year 2014 is expecting us to be very, very proficient in these high-stakes standardized tests. So I'd like to take just a brief couple of minutes to go through an overview of the results, and then turn it over to some of the administrative team and give you their in-depth analysis of what happened in their building.
No. Mr. Himmelberger, do we have a hard copy for the committee?
None of this right now, I can get it to you. What you have here is the eleven towns in Southern Wester County, and we did this analysis last year, and quite simply, it's taking the percent of all seventeen tests that are advanced or proficient, and the percent that are needs improvement or warning failure. In yellow, that simply designates that, that test exceeds the state average, and in green, that means that it's below the state average. And this is interesting, because these are the towns that are in our area, and that all of us belong to the same collaborative, and certainly, um, there is a fair amount of collaboration within these districts. As you can see, Grafton and Dudley Charlton had all seventeen of their tests exceed the state average. Now, this is certainly a higher level view, but certainly, we can glean from this districts that are achieving and those that are not achieving. As you can see, Grafton, Dudley Charlton, every, one of their tests exceeded. Auburn only had one, I believe it was grade four math, that did not exceed the state average. Not that the state average is what we are shooting for, but again, it is one benchmark that we can certainly see how we match up. In rounding out the top six, Lester, Millbury, and Northbridge. At the bottom, I've simply totaled up the seventeen tests, and as you can see, Grafton and Dudley Charlton, all seventeen of the tests exceeded the state. Auburn sixteen out of the seventeen. Lester, this year, had fourteen out of seventeen. Millbury twelve, and Northbridge eleven out of the seventeen. And Oxford is number seven, and as you can see here, um, this year, a grade eight did not make it to the state average, but we had nine out of the seventeen that were at average. Behind us, Spencer Reese Brookfield had four of the tests at average or above. Quay Bog had three. Webster and Southbridge did not have a single test that came in at or above state average. Again, this is only one benchmark, and it is certainly, when extrapolated against other districts, does not put us where I think any of us strive to be. As you can see here, this represents over time, from 2002 on the left to 2010 on the right, in grade four, ELA at Chafee, and then grade four at Barton. And you can see the history here, and the one thing to me that stands out is that unfortunately, it's relatively consistent. And by that, I mean that year after year, we don't seem to be raising our bar, we don't seem to be markedly improving our scores. Again, here, the dark blue represents, and again, it's left to right, which is not as intuitive, but the dark blue represents proficient, advanced, excuse me, the light blue represents advanced, the pink would be needs improvement, and the red is the warning or failure. And again, for grade four, historically, now that we have the data, these are the results of the last eight years. Again, grade four in math, you can see that universally, we are pretty close to fifty percent on the pink, which represents a needs improvement. And again, what unfortunately jumps out at these slides is the, the consistency that we have performed, and I would think that over time, we would like to see that curving upward to the right. Grade eight, ELA at the middle school, and as you can see here, we have a fairly high percentage over time that has achieved proficiency with that light blue. Grade eight at the middle school in math, speak for itself, it's a little bit different there, you can see the pink and the reds jump off the page at you, so we have a much bigger hill to climb, and this is not, and I wanna make this very clear, this is not simply the Ox- Oxford Middle School, this is middle schools throughout the state and throughout the country that struggle with the eighth grade math scores. Grade ten at the high school, again, from 2002 through 2010, you can see that we are in pretty good shape, um, with the dark blue and light blue adding together being, putting us in pretty good shape, and as you can see, over the past three years or four years, has definitely seen that upward progression. So we are getting better, the target unfortunately keeps moving further away from us, but our scores have improved here dramatically. If you look at math at the high school, that's very impressive, that thirty-six and forty-four percent of our students scored advanced. And, um, you know, so I think that, again, this is a trend that plays out across the Commonwealth in that students do finally take it serious and understand that it's a requirement for graduation, and as they start to make their plans for life after grade twelve, that this becomes much more, um, they become much more motivated to, to do better. And you can see here that certainly over the last three years, um, at the high school, we have improved our scores. Again, last year, the, the DESC invested a tremendous amount of money in this growth model, which is another dimension of how we can analyze the data. Quite simply, what they have been able to do is take every single test score and then compare it from last year to this year. So in the spring of 2009, if you were in grade four and took the ELA test and scored a two-twenty, they could then compare everybody that scored a two-twenty last year, and then put it on a model to see where the growth came this year. And quite simply, if this year, let's say sixty percent of those people that scored a two-twenty last year scored above a two-thirty, and our students were still at two-twenty or below, we would be very far down the student growth percentile and not showing any growth. And again, this goes on to a, a graph that shows the upper right being high growth, high scores, um, over to lower growth but higher scores, then to lower scores, high growth, and low scores, low growth. And so the state has simply taken and arbitrarily evened it at twenty, forty, sixty, eighty percent, and the growth percentile, very low to low to moderate to high to very high. Gives us one more way to look at the data. And again, if you were at average, you would see each shading to be roughly twenty percent. And again, here, um, as you can see, this represents our growth distribution across grades four, five, six, seven, eight, and ten in ELA. And obviously, you can see at the top there, grade four at Chafee, thirty-eight percent, twenty-one percent, twenty-three percent, so we really don't have high growth in that particular test, where we only have nine percent at high, nine percent at very high. But it is, it certainly, as this data accrues over the years, will give us another way to look at how well we are improving from year to year in specific grades and in specific subject matter. And again, you can see the same growth using, um, the MCAS grades four, five, six, seven, eight, ten in math. And it's interesting, you look at grade six, there is a lot of growth, twenty-five percent being high, thirty percent being very high, but then if you look at grade eight, which again, is somewhat mirrored, mirrored across the state, that we are all in the same boat, having to get those students to understand the material and be motivated to do well in the test, and there, only nineteen percent and nine percent score in the higher growth percentiles. So I think as you see, as we go through the data this evening, that there is no shortage of analysis that we can do now, right down to the individual student, the individual classroom, because we have the data, not only with the, um, the MCAS results, but also with our MAP testing, and the two are very tightly linked in terms of predictor and score. So that was just an overview, and now I'll turn it over to, I believe, Mr. Barone, for our elementary scores, and Mr. Yvonne, feel free to, to chip in on this, and then we'll just continue on to the middle school and the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Himmelberger. Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
I'm going to, um, do this tutorial from the smartboard over here, if that's okay with you. So this is a little PowerPoint presentation that I put together that shows the results of the scoring from last year. Just a little. Just a little humor here. Just lighten it up a little bit. What we have here is a look at the distribution of ELA and math scores for grade three last year. And as you, as you look at the different graphs, math is on the right, ELA is on the left, obviously. The red, the dark blue represents the advanced category. The light blue represents the proficient. White represents the needs improvement. And red represents the warning. So as you can see, for grade three, in mathematics and ELA, we have about roughly forty-four percent of the students who fell into these two areas of concern. On a lighter note, or on a more positive note, after looking further into the information and the data that was available, what we found is that there are a lot of students who are on the cusp of the different categories, needs improvement, and proficient. So our goal is to take those students and move them forward. So next year, hopefully, they'll be into the next categories. And as we break out, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, they're not? Oh, okay. I, I'm sorry, I had some other information that broke out the more specific questions for the different math item analysis and the ELA item analysis questions. But what, what is not here, and I wanted to show you, was that when you look at the questions in math and ELA for grade three, the questions that were offered, what you'll find is that there are, for ELA in grade three, thirty-two out of thirty-eight questions from last year's test, we came below the state average. Some, some averages as far or as great as nineteen to twenty-eight percent below the state. So what that tells us, and those questions are tied into, with those questions, we have the specific strands, the specific standards, the type of test, the type of question. That gives us information where we can target specific skills for students to move them forward. One of the areas that was a big concern in math was probability and statistics. Another area was number sense. Number sense is, does not surprise me, nor does probability and statistics. Number sense, meaning that we need to have the children practice more on their basic facts as they're going through the grades. So we need to focus a little bit more in those areas. The same thing with ELA. We had about, I think it was, for ELA, we, we came out of thirty-eight questions on last year's ELA test. We came, we scored thirty-two times, we came below the state average. So from my standpoint, those are, those are areas of concern. The next slide here shows the grade four performance, the distribution for ELA and math. And as you can see, this information is, is a little alarming for my standards. We have roughly sixty-eight, oops, thank you. Roughly sixty-eight percent of the students fell into the needs improvement or wanting category for mathematics. And about roughly sixty-three percent of the students for ELA and math. And again, when you look further into the information, you see that a number, a number, a great percentage of the questions, we fell below the state in terms of the scoring. This breaks out the information into subgroups by gender. Again, just more information. Here you see about fifty-three percent of the males fell into the wanting and needs improvement category, and about thirty-four percent of the females. That's for grade three ELA. Grade three math by gender, okay, the distribution. Grade four results by gender. Big percentage here for male, males, seventy percent fell into these two categories. And fifty-four percent for females. Like to flip those results in the near future, but that's going to take time. And here we have grade four math results by gender. Okay, just another way to look at the information. As Mr. Himmelberger alluded, we, the MAP scoring is linked and tied in closely to the MCAS score. What you're looking at here is information from the MAP test results that were recently given. This is information from the fall of oh-nine to the fall of one-oh. And here, on this model right here, this is a combination. This model represents an average of the combined third and fourth grade students. So we, for third grade, we had twenty students that were tested. For fourth grade, we had a hundred and fifty-five students tested. This shows, in the red area here, this is the big area of concern. This shows that forty-five point seven percent of the students showed, came in below proficiency and below growth. The green area is the area where you want to be in, which shows above proficiency and above student growth. So this kind of lines up with the charts that I just showed you for the MCAS results. This is the reading, and these are the results for mathematics. Thirty-eight point three percent of the students fell into the category where they scored below proficiency and below growth versus twenty-six percent, which showed above proficiency and above growth. This is just another way to look at the MAP scoring information. Only this breaks it out by grade level, starting at grade three and goes all the way up to grade eight. The red area is the area that shows below typical growth and below projected proficiency. And if you notice, in grade three, we, we had fifty-five percent of the students that scored in that category, with only twenty percent scoring in the green. And as you can see, the model decreases up until sixth grade, oops, thank you, up until sixth grade. And then it increases again in seventh grade, and then goes down in eighth grade. So this is just a different way to look at the information from one year to the next. Again, this is another way to look at the student growth for grade four in ELA. Over here on the right-hand side, the color codes, the color coding for a light, for a light green, very light green. This is the percentage of students, thirty-two percent of this percentage of the students in grade four in ELA showed very low growth. Twenty-two percent of the students showed low growth, as compared to twelve percent of the students that showed very high. Again, it would be nice if we can flip that, flip those results. As far as what are we going to do about this? This is an action plan that we've put together this year. Some of the things that we're doing to kind of combat these scores. If you look at last year's scores, last year's scores are, you know, relatively the same. This year's scores in fourth grade are more concerning and more alarming. But basically, there, there really hasn't been much change. So what are we going to do? One of the things we've done already is we've instituted consistent grade-level morning work that focuses on reinforcing math and language skills. So every morning, when the students come in for about fifteen or twenty minutes, grade three has morning work that focuses on math and language skills, reinforcing them. And grade four, the same. And then a little later on, in the daytime, they have a, all students take a grade-level writing prompt. They have a booklet, a journal, that they, they're issued a writing prompt, and they write freely and openly for fifteen minutes in their journal. This is a way to encourage them to read, to write freely. These journals are not graded, but the teachers do look at the journals and use that information to direct their instruction in terms of rebuilding skills. What we're looking at right now is flexible leveled math groups within the grades. This is something I proposed to the staff at the last staff meeting and where we've begun talk on how to bring this initiative forward. We've just begun working with before-school math support. We have about twenty, twenty-two or twenty-three students who come in three days a week, go into the computer lab for twenty minutes before school, and they work with an instructor that helps them on the computer, computer websites that are geared towards reinforcing their math skills. We have a literacy coach and Title I teacher that provide extra ELA support for students that tested in the needs improvement wanting category. They work through the Wilson Reading Program and a new program called Just Words that focuses on vocabulary reinforcement. We're talking right now with the Administrative Council about an after-school tutoring program that we're going to initiate for, to help reinforce skills for students that tested, again, in the needs improvement and the wanting category. Thank you. We've developed, within the Clara Barton School, we've developed an MCAS committee, that team of people that are going to begin looking at the data and the reports that we've generated, I've generated, and that you've seen through Mr. Himmelberger. And they're going to get really deep into the numbers and make suggestions for teachers in terms of a more in-depth action plan. Well, I have the teachers looking at their schedules a little bit closer, focus more on time on learning, particularly in the areas of ELA and math. And we're looking at more communication with home in terms of how to provide help to parents so that they can have the right information on how to help their students. And that's it. Questions? Thank you. I'll turn it over to Nam Yvonne.
One of the things I thought when I started working at the Chaffee School this year was that I wouldn't have to do another one of these things again. As you're aware, I don't have any children that have taken the MCAS or that will take the MCAS unless the state makes some changes. But what I want to emphasize by being here is that the issues that we're looking at and our need to address them are not grade-specific. Improving the third grade MCAS scores isn't the third grade problem. Including, improving eighth grade MCAS scores isn't, doesn't start in eighth grade. It's a K through eight, a K through three initiative. So I wanted to lay out what we're looking at at the Chaffee School to help redouble our efforts at building that strong foundation in basic skills and to begin to get our children, you know, as early as kindergarten, developing those higher-order thinking skills so that when they get to third grade and are taking that test, it's not new, it's not unusual, and they've got the confidence and the skill to move forward. One of the things that we are doing under the direction of our curriculum coordinator are exploring a K through eight writing program. Today, was it, yes, it was today. Two teachers from Chaffee Barton in the middle school went for training in the John Collins Writing Program. It'll be piloted in at least two classrooms in each building. And at the end of the school year, we'll evaluate that. And if it is, turns out to be a successful program for us, we have plans to train everyone in the use of that program so that we have a consistent language, K through eight when we're teaching writing, and a consistent program, K through eight, when we're teaching writing, to make sure we get those skills in place that help us score better on the mechanics portion of the writing. We're going to continue to explore and use the Four Square Writing Organizer, which will overlay nicely over any writing program that we're using to help our students keep their writing and for our younger students, their conversations on topic. We've seen, for the couple of years that we did it while I was at Clara Barton, our scores slowly begin to improve in the on-topic section of the writing through the use of the Four Square Writing Program. And we're hoping to spread that further through the building. We'll get training for teachers who are in need of training in the implementation of our Foundations Program, our Basics Phonics program. We've got some teachers in our building who have changed grade level, who have never taught the Foundations Program or aren't familiar with it. And while it's created such that you can take the manual and work with it, the training is a wonderful skill, wonderful to have in making sure that we're implementing the program with fidelity so that we're implementing the way it was intended to be implemented so that it's successful for all of our students. We'll continue to use the DIBELS testing, grades K through two, to help identify students in need of service, in need of support, early on, and get those supports in place through our Title I and our literacy program as soon as we can. The DIBELS testing also helps us identify kids who are doing well and their progress across the year, because we do that testing more than once throughout the year. We're looking with Mrs. Daly to explore training in everyday math for our staff again. As Mr. Barone indicated, it can be confusing for parents and teachers too sometimes. And getting that training, again, helps us to implement that program with fidelity and get better success from it. We're also continuing to examine the everyday math program for any shortcomings in relations to the math frameworks and supplement it as needed. One of the things that we've found in looking at that program over the year, it's very conceptually based, which really is great at helping kids understand what addition is, what multiplication is, what subtraction is, and how they work together, but not so good at helping us memorize and learn those basic facts a little bit more quickly so that I spend less time trying to do four plus seven and more energy on what's the problem that I need to solve and how can I solve it. We'll be looking for a universal math assessment to use, like we use the DIBELS in English Language Arts, so that we can test all of our students several times throughout the school year and get a sense for what skills are we covering, what, where do we need to refocus our efforts, and where do individual students need support. We have the Title I program, Before School Math, which started last week. Number of students coming in twice a week before school starts to get extra help in mathematics to develop those skills. Our literacy teachers address both ends of the spectrum, those children who are low and are in need of support and skills, but also those children who are doing well, helping them bring that next step to get those kids moving from advanced to proficient. We want to see the whole crew moving forward, not just focusing on the kids at the, the warning or needs improvement end. And finally, as an administrative council, we're looking at the possibility of implementing MAP testing in grade two, which would give us data throughout the second grade school year to use to help us focus our instruction, group children, and provide targeted instruction for children, but also providing data for children the minute they enter third grade to start working with right away on which children need which skills and start to focus instruction and grouping, implement grouping. As an administrative council, we're looking this, at this as a team effort. And, yeah, so we're all in the same boat, and we all need to be pulling the oars in order to head us in the right direction.
Thank you. Who's next? Middle school? Mrs. Hackett? Mr. Milner? I'm just a little depressed from that last one.
Thank you for having us here and giving us the opportunity to speak to you about our results and our plans for the future. First of all, I have far more students tested, so your packet from me is, is probably very lengthy. We certainly do have some, some areas that we need to, to map out and to do some improvement strategies. And our instructional leadership team began last Tuesday addressing that very issue. One of the things when we went over the results with the Administrative Council, one of the things that we noticed was the level of proficiency when the students arrive at the middle school, which my colleagues have pretty much displayed for you. There, there are areas where their skills are very, very weak, especially in math. And while they came into us with thirty-two percent proficient or advanced, they have left the middle school at seventy-seven and seventy-eight percent advanced, so, or proficient. So there was tremendous work done. We're still not where we need to be. We are in many, many areas below the state average. And the state average is just that. We would like to be better than the state average, so certainly we have our work cut out for us. All four grades took math and ELA, so you have several graphs for, for each grade. And then also, you have disaggregated subgroup material for you as well. So in the first slide here, what you're looking at is our grade eight we began with. So on your left in each slide, it will be, all successive slides will be set up the same way as the ELA, and on the right is mathematics. Well, our goal certainly is to have far more blue graphs than we have red and pink. And you can see that we are making some progress on ELA, but there is still far too much pink and red, which is needs improvement and warning in mathematics. We took a tumble in grade eight. While their ELA increased from seventy-one percent to seventy-seven percent proficient or advanced, mathematics dropped significantly, and their numbers rose from fifty-five percent to sixty-four percent. significantly, and their numbers rose from 55% to 64% and needs improvement and warning. Certainly not the direction we want to be going in. We would like to reverse those numbers proportionally and send them in the other direction. In the next slide, there is a correction to be made, first of all, because we're working with numbers in reverse of what you actually think is logical, where it says for the grade seven, that number decreased to 23%, it should say increased. Okay? Even though the level of improvement decreased, the number of people not improving had increased. So again, not the trend we want to see. There was a slight drop in ELA, and they did actually, grade seven did post some positive gains in mathematics, which is not what we have demonstrated across the grades, certainly not in grade eight. Grade eight certainly seemed to have its difficulties in mathematics, while grade seven did show some improvement, not tremendous, but at least moving in the right direction. Next is grade six, which seemed to post positive increases, in fact, in some in double digits, increased as much as 12 percentage points in both ELA and math, so excellent for them. And when we see the state graph, you will see how we compare to the state, that grade six really is, both in ELA and mathematics, our grade that showed the strongest amount of growth, the strongest percentile of growth compared to our state peers. Grade five, again, had definitely had its struggles. We dropped from 65% proficient the previous year to 63% proficient and advanced. Again, not the trend and way we want to go, not to post negative gains. And in ELA, that was perhaps better, but in, not good. In mathematics, we posted a negative gain of 15 percentage points. So absolutely not the way to go. This is our comparison to the state. In ELA, you can see that we have done fairly well compared to the state. In the middle, I'm not sure that it's absolutely clear to you, there is a gray X for the growth percentile and the high achievement percentile. And at several grades, we are above grade four and grade five are below. And that's ELA, which has usually historically been our stronger subject. If you go to the next slide, that isolates just the middle school, and it will also tell you that, on average, the student growth percentile, the median growth for us was 51%, leaving 73% of all of our students in the aggregate at the middle school at 73% proficient. However, grade five is still bringing up the rear there when we have significant work to do in that area. The next slide, same type of graph, and I'm not sure that the gray X is prominent and pronounced for you, but if you can see it, you'll see that only grades six and 10 are above the state, the median growth percentile. So while our sixth graders certainly worked and improved, it leaves a lot of room for improvement for other grades, either preparing to come to the middle school or while they're at middle school. Just as Mr. Broney did, I did take graphs, and again, I have so many children that my numbers are going to be larger. But on the next slide, this is the growth distribution at the middle school, and the greens and yellows, starting off at the very low and progressing over to the right, that overall, between the high and very high, we are at 48%, which is half of our, just about half of our students. However, 73% are proficient, but it's not enough. We still have another significant percentage of children that are not ranking where they should be on a growth distribution graph. So, and ELA, again, is usually a strong subject. Next slides show them broken down into subgroups by grade. And again, you'll see that grade six showed our most significant gains in improvement and that ELA still consistently one of our higher proficiencies. If you look at the last column in the chart at the bottom in the black and gray scale, you can see the proficiency levels of each of the grades in ELA. Pretty solidly, except for grade five, pretty solidly in the mid-70 percentile. However, when you go to math, when we get to that slide, you'll see that those numbers are not as good at all. By gender, not too significantly different. Females are 77% proficient as opposed to males at 70% proficient. By income status, a significant difference, low-income, 15 percentage points below non-low-income However, with the assistance of the Title I Program, with morning math and after-school tutoring, the additional services of the teaching assistants in our classes, in reading especially, we've been able to have small reading groups, and there has been significant improvement in the Title I and the low-income subgroups. The next one is special education status, and there is a huge disparity with only 17% of our special education students who take MCAS, not the alternate assessment, only 17% are ranking proficient. And then we get to math. And with our math, again, historically, we have been less proficient in mathematics, and the overall distribution of growth at the middle school ranks us at 51% proficient for math, significantly lower than ELA and significantly lower than our peer mates across the state. By gender, whoops, by grade, we're pretty consistent there. Again, grade five coming in, perhaps transition plus number cents and all of the skills that should be prerequisites for us are disadvantaged to some of the students coming in. And we do show some growth, however, grade seven and eight are in really not good stead. 53% in grade seven, only 36% in grade eight. So we have huge areas where we have started pulling data apart and certainly plenty to keep us working at an improvement plan. For the growth distribution by, in math, growth distribution continues pretty much the same as it did for the, by income, low-income is 38% proficient and non-low-income is 56% proficient, which is still very low, which is... And the special education, again, huge disparity, only 11% are proficient. And I remember from past years, Mrs. DeWitzek has asked if we are able to track a class. And with the new data warehouse software and the ability to do that, I selected our eighth-grade class, which is the current grade nine, so that you can see the growth. And ideally, we would like to have all blue on our bar graphs, and you can see from where the students started when they were fifth graders, they stayed kind of static through grade six, maybe a redistribution of proficient and advanced, but still within pretty much the same range. Huge growth in grade seven for proficient, and then a little bit of a drop-off in grade eight. So that is the current ninth-grade class in ELA. And I did the same for mathematics. Not as strong as you can see, but that is the same group of children that you are watching in grade five, six, seven, and eight. So they are the current ninth-grade students here. And despite what seems to be, at least to us, for all of our hard work and effort on the part of our instructional leadership team and our teachers and just ourselves, what seems to be disappointing information, having made AYP last year and not making it this year, we were commended for narrowing the proficiency gap between our groups, subgroups, and so on across the state. However, we are still a Level II school, and we are still in restructuring for math, so not to let the commendation take over for that. Our best practices and initiatives that continue, they are outlined for you in the booklet as well. Some of them are ongoing, some are new. So we have planned and implemented the reorganization of the Title I Program, and that continues even now, even today, through teaching assistants high through the program. We have push-in services, we have pull-out services, we have after-school, we have before-school. And it is the team that supports the Just Words Program, Wilson Reading Program, and the tutoring that we are able to offer as well. And that would speak to the five full-time people that were hired, and all of this addresses the things that I have just listed for you. We use an extension period, which is 45 minutes daily, to drill MCAS math release questions. It is sixth period of our day at the middle school, and all students do return to their homeroom at that time. They may switch among their team to have the math teacher or the science teacher. And several of the teams have been regrouping according to ability levels, and teachers on the team working with students to address their math issues. And they've been keeping a journal with some of the teams. We continue to have mandatory tutoring. Students who are falling behind or are in danger of falling behind are required to stay after school. We have teams that have been set up to take our MCAS data and to identify our weak areas so that, using the standards, we may address remediation and instruction in those areas of deficiency. We are continuing some of the things that we have used in the past, including Study Island, school-wide initiatives. At our last meeting, which was last Tuesday with the instructional leadership team, we spent a lot of time going through the data and pulling out our areas of weakness. We too are looking to have an all-school writing, similar to Drop Everything and Read. It would be Drop Everything and Write to a writing prompt for maybe 10 minutes, 15 minutes at most, in a journal, and using state rubrics so that both students and teachers become familiar with what it is that the scorers at MCAS Service Center are looking for. What is next for us is that, at our last staff meeting, we have asked teachers on their teams to look at question by question, to use the item analysis data, and to put together, each team by Thanksgiving, their MCAS improvement plan. I believe I already have five of them in my binder, so those teachers jumped right on board and they have a plan that they are working with. Some had something similar last year that they've tweaked for this year. Some have developed whole-new plans addressing new issues and new areas for remediation. And the final slide here addresses the essential conditions for effective schools. Effective school leadership, some of these are our locus of concern, some are our locus of control. Effective district systems of support, coordinated use of resources, and adequate budget authority. Aligned curriculum, which with the help of Mrs. Daly and our instructional leadership team, we have been addressing. Effective instruction, which hopefully through professional development, we will continue to address. Assessment and tiered instruction. Principal staffing authority. Professional development and structures for collaboration, which hopefully will return in the near future. We do plan to have some professional development on a voluntary basis, however, the two professional days that were in the past included in the calendar, were not here for our use this year. And adequate learning time and additional academic support, which we are, I believe, 129 hours beyond what the state requires for time on learning. With our mandatory tutoring, before-school and after-school tutoring in math certainly is helping. While it may not be sufficient, we certainly need to look at other areas to improve. Student social and emotional and health needs, and with the help of Mrs. Baker and our staff within our school, some of those become very huge issues for children in middle school. And family-school relationships in middle school, where sometimes family support tends to drop off for whatever reasons. Oftentimes, children, just their activities require so much time that not always our parents available to be involved, or sometimes children don't want them involved, whatever reason. That certainly is also one of the turning points of success, is also to solidify your family and school relationships.
Any questions from the committee? Mr. DeWitzek?
I just want to thank Mrs. Hackett for remembering. I always look for that information. I think that's invaluable because I say it every time, if you have children in your own house, you don't measure one against the other. And it always infuriates me that they do that. But now we can really see that class and how they go through, and I think that's so valuable to know because everybody grows at a different rate. But we can really see that, yeah, they stumbled, and it'd be interesting now to see as they keep going, do they pick it up? And I think we do say there are tens in certain grades that they kind of dip down, but that was, I think that was great to put that in. I appreciate it so much.
You can do that for every grade, and as each successive year, you can add that in as well.
Yeah, I think that's great. So, thank you very, very much for putting that in.
Thank you. Mrs. Ennis?
Just a, maybe it's just a comment, but there's a disconnect, obviously, somewhere. We've had this throughout the years that I've been on this committee. There's a disconnect somewhere in this system. And I don't know if it's the parental disconnection, if it's the teachers not understanding. I want to know what it is, though. I think it's your next administrative council. We need to identify what this disconnect is. For the numbers to stay so flat for so long, there's something wrong. So one of the questions I have is, we've seen what some of the other communities, our neighbors have done with their numbers. Do any of you talk to other principals? Do you speak with colleagues? Do you ask them what are they doing differently? Do you, as a superintendent, go out and say, you know, we have a problem here because this is a problem? I mean, this is a, I am shocked. I have to say that. I'm stunned that I'm looking at this tonight. I'm just, I'm beyond bamboozled right now. I really am, because I had such high hopes, and they're in the tank right now. So I think that there's something obviously wrong. And what makes it so obvious is it's because it's gone on for so long. We have tiny gains. Those are great. That's fine. We want those. But there's something wrong. There's something wrong in the system. There's something wrong, is it our teachers? Is it the communication? Is it the superintendent not relaying his goals? I don't know what it is, but I'd like to know what it is. I think that going forth, we need to hear from our principals much more often of how they're correcting this. And I know that there's a lot going on with curriculum. I know parent involvement is huge. I don't know how to get them in here. I don't know if there is a way to invite them, to engage them, to tell them, this is how important this is, besides calling them up personally and saying, please, we need you to come to the school, we need you to hear what's happening, we need you to understand what's happening with Johnny in his classroom, he's not getting it, we need you to help him at home. I don't know what it is. I don't know if you have to beg and plead. I'm not sure. But I think that the, there is a, it's a break. It's been on since my seven years here, there's been a break. And from seeing this tonight and how disappointing this is, the disappointment that I feel is I feel disappointment for the whole district, for every principal. I feel for every kid, for the families that have children that aren't going to make it. It's very troubling. When I see the communities, I think this is where it really gets me. I see the communities that are doing well, we're not that much different than they are. I don't see it. I don't... I don't see the difference between us and Auburn. I don't see it kid-wise. I'm talking, I'm not talking town. I'm not talking their community. I'm talking about the kids. I don't see a big difference. So, something, you know, you go a mile down the road and they're excelling in everything and we're taking a dive all around town here with these numbers. So, I need to get this clear in my head of how the connection is going to be reconnected. It's failing. And it's failing because I'm stunned. I am absolutely stunned by these numbers tonight. I really am. And I know how hard you work, but there's something amiss. It's either your teachers, it's the communication, there is something amiss. So, I hope that we can have, our agendas are full of this because this is what drives this district, these numbers, unfortunately. And I hate teaching to test. I am so against this MCAS. I've always been against it. Teaching to test is, I think it just degrades our teachers. So, in saying that, that's my feelings on this. It's just, I am, I'm beyond bamboozled tonight. I really am. And I hate to say that, but.
Thank you. Mrs. Twizik.
Mrs. Ennis, to that, I'd say there's one other part that we don't see, and I know when Mr. Himmelberger brought that chart up, the different towns around us, it'd be interesting to put their budget numbers along next to those towns. We just don't, we don't have a lot of the cash. Let's just call it what it is. We don't. I think if you put their numbers of what their school budgets are next to them, that will have some play. Some of these kids are stimulated over and over again with all kinds of stuff going on. And we do the best we can. But that's kind of like been the saying, "It's good enough." And, you know, we're seeing that it's not good enough. I mean, we're trying. I know they are. You've said that too, that they're trying there. But it's good enough. That's kind of been the motto for a long time. I know, I'm not saying that someone's not giving us or, you know, whatever, but I think it comes down to money, teachers, staff, all these things that we can go out there and dazzle them with. You go to these schools, there's Auburn everything, I listen to them, and the courses, the younger kids are taking, younger kids in the young grades have foreign language. We haven't even gotten to that part. All this stimulates them to learn and go. And we're giving them meat and potatoes every day and really, that's the reality of it, I think. And that would be very interesting to see if we could get the budget numbers on those towns around us that they use. And I think you might find, unfortunately, and I know that's kind of not what people like to hear, but I would gather to think that probably might have some truth in it.
Okay. Mr. Peterson.
I'm not going to belabor it because I've been through this before and it's on a couple of state boards. Mrs. Ennis, you're right. Mrs. Twizik, you're right. But we finally, as a system, realigned our buildings, realigned the town, which has taken us 15 years to get a full-day kindergarten, other things. It wasn't fast enough for me, the way government works either. Unfortunately, we lagged in a lot of things. The same questions that Pat was asking, and I appreciate Mrs. Hackett, this report because I compare a class all the way through, even though I don't believe in tracking because we got rid of the old ways of tracking a few, years ago. But this is the type of tracking that needs to be done so that the town knows where we stand with a class, not just a third-grade class, a fourth-grade class. And now that we've followed them all the way through and seen your figures right up through the eighth grade, there's some other place to go now. And you and I had extensive conversation in the last few days about this anyway. And I appreciate what you're doing. The state has finally also recognized that we have not been doing this right, even though the MCAS were shoved down our throats. We jumped on it. We embraced MCAS as a community early on. It's just that they made their changes so often and frequent, we couldn't keep up with it. And that's all I'm going to say. This looks like we're in the right direction. We had some good plans on the board last year. Yes, we slipped a little bit, but now we can see that, like you pointed out, Mrs. Hackett. So, my only question is, we're stagnant, as far as I'm concerned, still. What are the dates and what are the other progress areas that we have to comply with and when?
Stan Himmelberger.
Just so the public knows, this also, we can bring them on board like Mrs. Ennis said.
In the answer to your question, Mr. Peterson, through the chair, I think Mrs. Ennis started to hit it on the head. There's an awful lot of factors that go into this and it's not any one particular area that has more sway over another. I think everybody is redoubling their efforts. We certainly have the data now, as Mr. Peterson pointed out. We are, we will reap the benefits of a full-day kindergarten and our realignment, and we just want to see continuous improvement. And I think those two words have been overused a lot, but that's what we need to see so that, and I believe that we will see it. I would like to report back to the committee, perhaps monthly, to give them an MCAS update in terms of the initiatives that are working and the support that we are getting from our instructional teams, from our teachers, from everybody. I think parental outreach is a huge part of it. I think obviously money is a piece of it. And we will not rest until we improve. And so, if we have things that we need to come to the committee for, we certainly will. But I think that a monthly progress report, from me, is certainly where we should start so that you can see that we are serious about it and that we are taking action because it is what we need to do for our students.
Mr. Peterson.
I had one question that was not answered, Mr. Himmelberger. The state dates and deadlines, just so that everybody is on the same page and we know where we're going and all this stuff's set, on the committees that I'm on at a higher level, there are dates of 2011, 2013, that we need to be at a certain point and accomplish a certain thing.
I'm not exactly sure which specific targets you're referring to, Mr. Peterson. There are many in front of us. Certainly, the MCAS target, as we know, is 2014. We also have an overhaul of administrative and teacher evaluation systems, starting in the year 2013. We have a tremendous amount of issues that we still don't even know yet that is coming down when ESEA does get reauthorized, based upon where the political winds take us over the next six months. We'll go a long way towards determining what, at the state level, we will have in front of us. We already know that the Education Jobs Bill did not give us much. We also know that Race to the Top will not give us much, however greatly appreciated every dollar is. So, a lot of it will be us as an administrative team, us as an education community, going before the town, going before the state, legislative leaders to make our point for what we need. And certainly, I believe that districts like us, that are standalone, districts do not have the resources now and the playing field is not level compared to some of our regional districts, compared to some of our vocational schools, and certainly compared to some of our charter schools. And until the playing field becomes level again, we will be operating at a disadvantage like most single standalone districts will be. And the problem will only get worse until it's addressed fairly inequitably. And I think that's what we look for as we go forward. If I could just make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, I know that we have Mr. Nugent here to talk about the high school and Mrs. James to talk about Project Coffee, and if we could get them on and then maybe continue this conversation at the committee's behest.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I think we should move along. I just would like to tag on to a couple of statements that were made. I think Mrs. Twizik's 100% correct. A lot of it has to do with finances, but we have to look at this from a reality standpoint. I've been on the committee for five years. This is my sixth year coming up. The money's not going to change. The money is going to be what the money is. We have to find ways to utilize the systems that we do have, the abilities of the administrative staff that we do have, to make sure that we're maximizing every single child's education in this system that we can, within the financial constraints that we're living with. That's not going to change. It's not going to get better. I mean, we can talk about it until, you know, the cows come home. We're not going to have more money in Oxford. This is Oxford. So, we have to look at ways that, either through accountability, through more reporting to us directly, as you said, on a monthly basis. We have to put this on the front burner and turn the heat up. And I think that's the only way it's going to improve. You know, we can look at all different things and what different towns. To be honest with you, I don't really care what other towns are doing. If you want my honest opinion, I could care less. I'm concerned about Oxford and our scores, that we meet the goals and objectives that the state requires us to meet by 2014. So, we have to do as a group, whatever it takes, within the money that we're working with, the people that we're working with, to do that. So, I just think we need to turn up the heat on it. And if it means that every meeting, we don't talk about anything else but MCAS and our results and then my next favorite topic, the dropout rate, then that's what we do. And we'll talk about it and talk about it and talk about it until we can see continued improvement. I just think that we need to focus every ounce of energy that we have so that we don't have to look at this next year. And I really think that, you know, it was disappointing for me as well as it is for everyone else. Let's look at reality and talk about what we have and what we're able to do with what we have. Mr. Nugent, why don't you join us for this scintillating conversation? Thank you both very, very much.
Thank you.
We don't need high tech. We need results, Mr. Nugent.
Well, that's good.
That's why I love that guy.
Just tell me it's good news.
Mrs. Hackett is such an eloquent speaker. I always fumble after I speak after her. I will try. You have before you a packet with the high school MCAS results. Hoping right into our ELA, we had 129 students at the high school take it. We had two failures, 15 scored Needs Improvement, 90 students scored Proficient, and 22 students scored Advanced. Just on a side note, in checking today before I came tonight, those two failures transferred to us. They did not come up through the middle school. They were transfers to us. In math, 125 students took that last May. We had one failure. 22 scored Needs Improvement, 44 scored Proficient, 58 scored Advanced. Introductory physics, which were the freshmen, which is the class of 2013, which is not a factor in AYP, we had 18 failures, 33 scored Needs Improvement, 53 scored Proficient, and 13 scored Advanced. I do want to say that we work hard up here, but we're certainly not miracle workers. So, the hard work that happens in the lower grades certainly benefits the kids with these MCAS scores. It's not just the high school that gets these kids through, but the lower grades. Educational proficiency plans for next year, so next year's seniors, 17 will be on plans for ELA and 23 for math. And right now, what that means is that those students will have to take an additional year of that subject and pass that subject and also pass the final exam in that subject to meet their plan. The next page shows a three-year comparison, which in one way shows us that we are certainly, especially in math, very impressed with the math scores, are moving our kids from failing to Needs Improvement, from Needs Improvement to Proficient. The next page kind of shows where it's all about with the AYP is that the percentage of children who scored Proficient and Advanced has increased and continues to increase. And inversely, the Needs Improvement failure has continued to decrease, which leads us to my last page, taken from the DOE website, from the specific Oxford High School page, where we did meet AYP on every level. Our performance rating was very high in both categories, on-target for ELA and above-target for math. What we will continue to do is, we have a small grant that we have been approved for that we use for one-on-one math tutoring during the school day. We take students, targeted students, out of their academic labs or non-academic classes, PE stuff, classes like that. Currently, I'm looking for another retired teacher, Mrs. Only, who was with us for many years, retired after retiring. So, I have three people.
You do have a lot in this system going.
I have three former math teachers lined up. They don't know it, but I have current math teachers, you know, inviting them over for dinner and they'll hit them up for that. Biology, part of that grant will be used for biology in February. The seniors who have not yet passed the Science and Technology Test will take the test again. So, they will be tutored. And after that, any of these students that we talked about tonight who didn't pass will take biology. Biology continues to be a very, very tough test. When you look at the ELA and the math retest, it's more of a focus test where biology is the actual test. Again, it's a very hard test to pass. So, one of the things we could certainly look at is, I mean, do we want our students to try to take the physical science test again? But then that will kind of keep them back from progressing into biology their sophomore year. But that's, you know, some of the things we are looking at. We did add an additional math class to address the EPP requirements and an additional science class to address those students who have yet to pass the MCAS results. I do want to say that Mr. Wells does apologize for not being here tonight. He does have a family commitment and we have sat down numerous times looking at these scores and results. Do you have any questions?
Mrs. Ennis?
If I could just ask a quick question. How do you and Mr. Wells convey to the students, once they become freshmen, how important this MCAS is to their graduating?
The first meeting we have, first freshman class meeting we have, I do address that, explain it to them, you know, that it is a requirement and they buckle down now. It's an easy requirement to fulfill if they let their teachers do what they need to do and they do their work. So, they know the first, the first day, probably the second day of school where we meet with the class, we sit down and explain to them the graduation requirement and, you know, what we do for them if they don't make it the first time around.
Because it's just, when you look at the numbers, it's amazing how they, you know, Mrs. Conan and I had said how they get it, that this is important, you have to have it, you know? And the other grades, they don't get it yet. So, I'm wondering if they need to be, maybe start being told more of this sooner, that as you come up in grade, this is very, very important. I mean, it is a high-stakes test.
And again, I don't want to sit here and, we do have great results, good results. Road's where we're supposed to be. It is going to get more difficult as we get to 2014.
Absolutely.
So, that's a feat within itself. But it's, like Mr. Vaughn said, it's pre-KOP. It's not just us with these kids. These kids are coming prepared.
But we have to remember also, in 2014, if we have too many snow days, we are going to be under the gun too. So, it's not just MCAS. You know, when you read "No Child Left Behind," if your district has too many snow days, you could be in jeopardy. So, that's how well-written that law is, you know? So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Nugent, because I've sat in on many freshman orientation introductions with you and Mr. Wells. And they do hammer that home right away from the time, the first time they walk in the door and then continue, from my understanding, all the way up. But like I asked Mr. Himmelberger and Mr. Nugent, really hit on it, the stakes are higher as we move from 2011 to 2014 now. The percentages and the increase of, or the percentages of increase are going to be, maybe it's still stagnant or maybe smaller, but you will see instead of 73%, hopefully 80, 85% in the AYP and the other areas. And the stakes are going to get tougher. And I think, Mrs. Ennis, you're right. I think at the lower grades, the kids say, "Hey, I've got up until 10th grade to make this thing. I can take it two, three times a year." And the state hasn't realized that. I mean, there's continual retesting that's allowed to them. So, maybe some alignments have to be made there too. And we're working at that at a different level.
All right. Mrs. Conan.
I think I can speak for all of us who are a little distressed seeing a lot of these results. I think that we have a plan in place as far as our full-day kindergarten, as far as restructuring. I think that that is going to help. But I definitely think that we've all, you know, like somebody said, "I'm sorry," we've all got to be rowing the same way. And I think starting in kindergarten and coming up, I mean, I know, you know, elementary school, graduation is forever away. Middle school, you just got way too many things on your brain. And I think in high school, you finally get it, that, okay, you know, in two years, I'm graduating and I'm going to be doing something else with my life. And I think that that's where the reality really comes in. But I definitely think that it's something that we need to start almost as soon as they hit our doors because, you know, like Mr. Peterson said, the stakes are only going to take. increase. And we really, knowing how a school year passes so quickly, we really don't have a whole lot of time between now and then. So, you know, I hope that everybody just is rowing the same way because I think that we all need to be in that same direction. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Spitz, and I talked about something earlier too, and he just sent me another note. I've asked this over the years, and where does Project Coffee fall into your numbers, Mr. Nugent? Because we're responsible for a lot of things when it comes to Project Coffee, for other towns' problems. They become Oxford, I shouldn't say problems, they become Oxford's numbers and figures. How do they play into your?
They don't. These are just students who took them at Oxford.
These are just our students at this point in time. So, now we've isolated that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Thank you. Mrs. James?
Oh, yeah. All right. Welcome. I'm sorry, I guess I jumped the gun.
You're on.
I was leading.
I'm sorry, Mrs. James, I jumped the gun again, but.
Just led right in there. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will again, as I did last year, testing formally that Department of Education does not allow schools to contest handfuls of your students to publicly discuss the results of those, of that testing because, one, we're dealing with confidentiality of the individual students involved. But also, if you remember your statistics, statistically, the numbers of students are too small to make, to make global discussions about what they did last year versus what they're doing this year. What I will say is that in June, our graduating class of 2010, all 100% of our students earned a high school diploma and passed all three of the required MCAS.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Teachers have, and our students, have worked very hard to make that happen. And it is our commitment, the staff and the students, to make that happen again for the class of 2011. And we do a variety of things to make that happen. All five of our vocational teachers and our four academic teachers are committed to using the Massachusetts frameworks as the core of their teaching. So, you may see the horticulture-agriculture teacher at the courtyard at Oxford High School and our students pulling weeds and transplanting plants. But the teacher is also teaching the horticulture-agriculture frameworks and the students are learning plant management, soil management, mulching, plant propagation. You may see our construction crew at the Clare Barton School building a shed. But our students are also, and our construction teacher is also, teaching the students the various methods of building. He's identifying and explaining how common tools are used and measurement devices are used. All the shop teachers are teaching the frameworks regarding business management, how to operate a small business, how to do the accounting of a small business. If you walk into our math classroom, you will see hanging on the wall, the Massachusetts Frameworks for Math. Each teacher met with me in September and October and they identified their goals for teaching this school year and how they were going to incorporate the frameworks and the testing procedures used on the MCAS into their classrooms. And I, with the permission of one of the teachers, have included an example of that goal-setting conference for you. Each teacher hands in a weekly plan book and each day in their plans, the teachers identify what strands of the Massachusetts frameworks that they are going to be teaching and the evaluation tools that they are going to use that mimic the tools that are used on the MCAS. The students know this, the teachers know this, and every day, they are working on those goals. And that is how we have taken a group of students who come to us, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th, and sometimes 12th grade, without having passed the MCAS. And we get them to a passing score in June for graduation. It is a focus every day by, on the part of every student. They know that they are there to pass the MCAS. They know that that is a requirement and that's the goal that they are striving for. And the teachers are focusing in on it as well. It's a tough job and the teachers have, you know, stepped up to the plate and are working very hard to make this happen. I know that we are facing the same requirements for 2014. We're quite pleased that students are passing the test. Getting them to proficiency is going to be quite difficult. And you have the exact printout of the numbers of students and the scores that they received.
Any questions? Everybody good? Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mrs. Baker, do you have something tonight? No, you're good. You are good. I've heard that.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right. Mr. Himmelberger, thank you for that presentation, everybody, and your hard work on it. And I appreciate the actual hard copies. And the reason I say that is because this gives me time to really kind of study through everything and do it at my leisure and kind of try to digest some of that great information you gave us tonight. So, thank you very much for that. You're going to take over again on dropout rates, which I'm really excited about.
Thank you, I think, Mr. Spitz. I know this is a topic that brings a lot of passion to people. The state made a big hue and cry that they went below 3% this year in dropout rates. Ours went up significantly. Even though the numbers are small, the percentage is big. And Mr. Wells and Mrs. James, Mr. Nugent, and myself are already starting to address and put things into play to address this, again, for confidentiality. All I'm going to say is that our dropout rate is 3.6%, which is above the state average. And I would like to come back to the committee, I believe on the next meeting, which I think is November 15th, and talk with Mrs. James and Mr. Wells and Mr. Nugent about the plans that we have put in place and where we think we need to go in order to try and bring this number down. Students that are at risk these days have an awful lot of pressure on them not to stay in school. And it's important, it's incumbent on us to try and find strategies to keep them in school and to graduate. So, I would like to pick apart that number and give the committee a report on November 15th with Mr. Wells so that we can demonstrate what we are doing and strategies and programs that we are putting in place to try and reduce this number dramatically.
Mr. Peterson?
This dropout situation, the state hasn't really addressed for us yet either. And I would like, well, I guess I should wait and see your figures, but some of these that transfer or just leave or go somewhere else were accounted for as dropouts or still on our rolls and we have no way of tracking where they are or what happened to them.
It's, Mr. Trahan and I were on the phone with DESE, trying to ascertain why students that have transferred to in-state private or have transferred out of state are still being charged to us. I did not include them in our number because we only took the true Oxford student who dropped out. We did not take into consideration all of the numbers because certainly some of them who have relocated out of the country or have transferred out of state or, in many cases, transfer in-state to another public institution and yet don't show up there. So, we send records that are requested to another district and then if the student does not choose to enroll, the student is charged to us.
Mr. Himmelberger, not to interrupt you, but this was a discussion you and I had prior to this meeting. This has been a thorn in my side since I've been on the committee is dropout rates. Every single year, we talk about it. Every single year, we say it's unacceptable. And we really should talk about the published dropout rate, okay? Not the rate that we do when we subtract all these other, these other children out that we can't, we can't track. Because what is actually reported to the state is what we need to discuss and talk about. Because it's the same for every town. It's not just us. I mean, every town in the state of Massachusetts would also have those numbers of children that left to go to other institutions and didn't. Let me, let me just finish first, then you can, then you can say what you'd like to say because I have to get this out. We talk about this every single year and every single year, the percentage goes up. I have yet to see a year that's declined based on the action plans. I apologize. We had one year that had dropped, last year.
Last year?
That was the first time. But now we're way back up again. So, now I'm nervous about that as well. This, along with the MCAS results, are going to be my focus this year, to see marked improvement through reporting. I want, I want an action plan, and this is kind of how we kind of came up with this, November 15th plan, and I thank you. I was giving you till December prior to the meeting. You jumped on the November. So, you know what? I'm good with that, that I get the information sooner. I think the committee needs to know on a regular basis what your action plan is going to be with the administrative council, what the update is on a regular basis as to what you see. Do you see anything at all that's changing, that's changing as a result of the things that you've put in place? I really and truly have to see this number, our perception of the number drop. I mean, I know we're not going to get real, actual numbers again until next year. But there are ways you can still tell what's happening with your numbers. I mean, you'll, if you see students dropping out, you're going to know that that's going to impact your number. So, we really have to get a real good feel for how this is going during the course of this year for me. Dropout rates are a big problem and it's something that I think every town deals with, but some towns more effectively than we're doing. So, obviously, as Mrs. Ennis mentioned in MCAS, there's a disconnect somewhere that we're not catching, that we're not focusing in on that would prevent some of this. And I know some of it you can't prevent. I do understand that. But at the same time, there were some that we could have prevented, some that we, that did fall through the cracks that ended up leaving us. And again, I report this as, every town deals with those same numbers, with students going out of country or being, going to another school and not reporting. So, we're getting reported the exact same way that every other community in the state of Massachusetts is being reported. And yet, we still present the high number that we're presenting as of we speak. And what is the actual number that's being reported?
That I haven't seen yet. And as soon as I do see it, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Just to your point though, Mr. Spitz, we face a much higher percentage of issues than many other towns in the area. And we are in the process of working with DESE to make sure that the reporting is proper for us so that that number is accurately reflected.
Okay. Well, you should include that in your report as well when we, when we do that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Himmelberger, but that was the reason for my question and you gave us dropout rates of what are really true dropout rates for the community. But as Mr. Spitz said and we had said before, and that was another reason for it, that isn't the way you still report to the state. You have to report everything, don't you still? They have not adjusted their accountability, our accountability to them.
No, the state has adjusted it.
That's what I asked originally.
But they still have incorrect data for us and we are in the process of trying to get that corrected.
So, under the, if I may, Mr. Spitz, under the new reporting, our accountability will be different and they should reflect real numbers then.
Correct.
Thank you.
Good. Very good. Mrs. Conan?
Just for a reference, do we have any idea what our number of students, actual students last year dropout rate was? I mean, I understand percentages, but I mean, was it five students? Was it?
For this past year.
Right.
Reported, there was 20 students.
And that's for all, as of spring, 210 or is this '09 figures?
Summer '09.
'09.
And '09-10.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
And we don't have to go on because you covered that very nicely with me prior to the meeting. So, I appreciate that.
Look forward to solving it.
Great, great. Could we have our student representative, Nicole St. Jean, please come up and join us? Nicole was involved tonight in many, many activities. So, we're trying to work Nicole in. She's got a busier schedule than I do, I think.
A little calendar from NJROTC.
Okay, Nicole.
Okay.
Do us.
Ready. Okay, like always, I'll start with sports. The boys soccer team, well, most sports are coming, the season's coming to an end except football. Football goes on to Thanksgiving. So, the boys soccer team is seven, eight, and one, and their senior night is tonight. Excuse me. And they have two games left and they need at least one win and a tie to make districts. The seniors this year on the boys soccer team were Tyler Downing, Corey Levitt, Zach Lasser, Matt Rice, John Milos, Sam Corey, Kyle O'Connor, Ryan Belcito, and Joe Dignall. And the same thing for girls soccer. Their senior night was tonight. They have two seniors, Becca Howe and Shannon Brunel, and their record is five, nine, and three. Cross-country, their record for the boys is five and six and they are attending the league meet this Wednesday. And senior Ethan Doian is hoping to place in the top 15. And their districts are November 14th. And for the girls cross-country team, the two girls that competed on our cross-country team are in the top 25% of the league this year, which is good. Field hockey, the field hockey team has made it to districts officially. They are now 11, three, and three. Kudos to them. So, we'll see them go on and play some more. And football is five and two and they are playing this Friday night at 7:00 in Leicester. From the National Honor Society, they are planning their annual Sadie Hawkins Dance, which will be held on November 19th at 7:00 PM. They are working on sending out care packages, care packages to soldiers overseas. They'll be sent out in late November. They're working with a woman who sends them out every year. An NHS website is also in the works. I'll have more details on that as it comes together. And they are planning their community service learning project again, where we'll be working with Mrs. Godowski in the Life Skills Program. From the84.org, we had our kickoff on October 2nd, where we, and we collected signatures at the town meeting for our, working with banning the selling of tobacco products in pharmacies. And we ran into a little opposition and we ran into people that were for it and support. So, we'll be continuing with that throughout the year. Cultural enrichment signups for the trip to Ireland are still in the office and still underway. I believe they held their first meeting last week or the week before. So, it's all coming together, everything. The STOMP team, which is a new club that came into Oxford High School this year, they had their first meeting last week. They met today. I walked through the meeting and she didn't have anything specific for me to say, but they're going underway. So, they'll have some performances, I'm sure, coming up soon. From the yearbook staff, they are selling business ads right now where businesses can purchase a page, a half a page, or a business-sized card to be placed in the yearbook to help fundraise. And they'll be sending out notices for parent ads, which senior parents can put a page in the yearbook for their senior that's graduating. Advisory doors, we have advisory classes Tuesdays and Thursdays. And like we do every year, we have competitions for every holiday where you decorate your door and judges walk around and will judge the doors and whoever wins in each hallway will get a breakfast. So, we're doing that this year. And this Friday is the senior breakfast and senior skit, which is where seniors will dress up in Halloween costumes and the juniors put on a skit about the seniors. So, that's a lot of fun. And at the senior breakfast, the seniors are fitted for their cap and gowns. Scary. I have a lot from the NJROTC. So, okay, on November 4th, they have their full-blown Navy inspection. Two officers will be coming. One is the area manager, Commander Hankins, and one is the captain from the Holy Cross The inspection will start around 12 and then the ceremony and demonstrations will start at 5:30 in the gym, which is open to the public, I believe. And if you would like, any of the school committee members, if you would like to sit in on the briefing that the cadets do before the inspection without any instructors, you can let me know and I'll tell Commander Maisley or you can contact him and he'll get you in there. He told me. So, Master Chief Hu is no longer teaching here. He taught here last year. He's officially retiring on Saturday, November 6th at 2:00 PM in New London. The NJROTC is serving dinner to the Oxford veterans on November 6th. They are also doing the veterans dinner, they're doing color guard at the veterans dinner at the Auburn Oxford Elks on November 7th. They are leading the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th. They are leading the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th, and their first drill meet is November 13th in Rhode Island. And also about the inspection, they're working with NHS. The National Honor Society members will be ushering and handing out programs that night. They are in the works of planning their Thanksgiving holiday community service with the Oxford Food Pantry, and any fundraisers that they do, the money they receive will be going to the Oxford Food Pantry. And the color guard has made 14 appearances this year. They appear at all home games, showing the colors, and they have three more appearances this week. And I handed you the calendar that he handed me and gave me many copies to give to you so you can follow along. Okay, from student council, since we haven't been here in three weeks, the biggest thing was Family Fun Day was a huge success, and I honestly, honestly say this, that it was the best homecoming, week, dance, pep rally, weekend, everything that I've seen since I've been in Oxford High. I'm not saying that just because I'm graduating, but the amount of school spirit and the amount of students involved and the amount of people that came on Saturday and supported all the teams and all the clubs has been more than any year that I've been in Oxford High. So, it was great to see everyone come together, and our whole school was all Oxford, go Oxford. Huge, pep rally was a huge success. The dance was great, even if we lost power for a couple minutes, it was still great. So, overall, it was just a blast, and I wish I could do it again. The school store is up and running, and at every home football game, they'll be outside selling all the goods, so don't come with a sweatshirt, so then when it's cold, you can buy one from the school store. Makes sense, doesn't it? I know, right? Also, the student council officers represented Oxford High School very well at the Massachusetts Association of Student Council's Officer Shop on October 16th at the Holy, Holy Cross, where they learned specific tools about how to be a good officer, like specified, like I was with all presidents, the vice president's with all other vice presidents, and they target their specific roles in the council and allow them to bring a lot of information back to the council and help us. We are also planning our Halloween event, which will be this Thursday in the cafeteria from 5:30 to 7:30 for all elementary students. There'll be crafts, musical chairs, trick-or-treating with a little haunted hallway kind of thing, and a costume contest. So, bring your good costumes, and the cost is $5. The student council will also be attending the Central District Massachusetts Association of Student Council's Conference on November 12th at Northbridge High School. We're also holding the Central Mass Idol Competition this Friday, right after school, where students will sing. It's like American Idol, and then we have judges from here, and then after that, they can move on to a bigger competition, and the winner of everything is eligible to win a scholarship. So, maybe an Oxford High student will win one. Coming from the theater department, we are putting on three short plays on November 4th at 7:00 PM. A play from the seniors, a play from the juniors, and a play from the sophomores in the theater performance class. They're great. You should all come to see them. They're fantastic. Grades close this week, and report cards come out next week, and parent-teacher conferences are November 10th and November 12th. And I'm done.
And we thank you. All right, that's great.
Okay.
You got to run off again? Good night, Nicole. Thank you.
Good night.
Uh, Mr. Himmelberger?
Did you get most of that put on TV?
Nicole?
Nicole?
Could we get most of that put on TV, those dates and everything? Could we get that to the central office to put on?
Sure, I can do that.
That's why I was laughing, Nicole. Thank you. Mr. Himmelberger?
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. I just wanted to give a brief update as the business manager, Mr. Matthew, is homesick this evening. Attached on your packet, you will see the latest update, and he has more information forthcoming that will show us how these three years have balanced with ARRA and the jobs bill and all of the stimulus money. The bottom line is, we are very tight for the rest of this year with about $140,000 unencumbered, and we will continue to watch that carefully. I just have two quick things, Mr. Chairman. One is that the Oxford Middle School renovations will continue to be worked through the School Building Authority, and the town manager has said that that would be a topic for the Mace Town Meeting. So, we have a lot of work to do to get the information before the town as to the importance and scope and size of that project. And the only other thing I have is I received, or Mr. Wells received, from the Oxford Ecumenical Council, which runs the Oxford Food Shelf. Dear Mr. Wells, I recently contacted the student council to see if students could, would be able to assist us at a food drive. Twenty-six students at Oxford High School quickly responded, and the students came to the Oxford Walmart in shifts on September 18th and 19th and volunteered their time to get both food and monetary donations for the Oxford Food Shelf. The students impressed all of us with their enthusiasm, politeness, and maturity. They are a true credit to Oxford High School and our entire community. Together with your students, we were able to collect $1,500 and 215 cases of food that will allow us to continue to serve the 130 families that the Oxford Food Shelf assists each month. Enclosed are the list of the students that participated. Sincerely, Cindy Joslin, food drive coordinator. So, a terrific number of our students gave up their weekend to help a lot of people for the food bank.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Before we hear from the committee members, I'd like to get the executive meeting minutes from September 27th approved, if I may. Could we have a motion, entertain a motion to do so?
So moved.
We have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, could we put that to vote, please?
Yes.
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 Abstain.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you very much on that. Mrs. DeWittick?
Um, let's see. I don't think, um, just to congratulate, obviously, tonight, the soccer seniors out there, that was, as their game is going on. And I heard homecoming, I wasn't here, but I heard it was fantastic.
It was great.
And I heard they ran out of food.
They did, everybody.
Imagine you ran out of food. That's a great thing. That is a good problem, so very good. And the only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is from the Negotiations Subcommittee. I know we had passed around the memorandum of agreement, but we need to vote to accept the memorandum agreement with the OEA, so it's on record.
Okay. Could we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Okay, could we put that to a vote, please?
Yes.
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 And I also vote yes. Thank you very much, Mrs. DeWittick, for bringing that up.
Yeah, and that's all I have.
Great. Mrs. Conan?
Um, I have nothing.
Okay. Mrs. Ennis?
I'll just echo what Mrs. DeWittick said. I did go to homecoming, and it was fantastic.
Good.
Nicole was correct. It was a great time. We had to leave because Molly had to serve, but the game, I would have loved to have seen the finish of that football game.
Oh.
But it was good. Very good.
Great. Mr. Peterson?
I can't echo those sentiments, but I congratulate everybody seeing as I was on vacation for a few weeks and back in the groove, but I have to make an apology also. Looking at tonight's agenda for an NJROTC and what she had for student council and everything coming up, November 4th seems to have an awful lot of events scheduled. I will be out of town. I'll be at convention, and one other item to jot down, Mr. Spitz, is you need a, a vote, and you need a official delegate for the convention.
Okay.
I just.
Tonight, if you'd like.
Well, whenever you want to get to it, but, uh, do it now or wait till I'm done?
Well, I don't want to interrupt you.
That's fine. I'd like to, uh, Mr. Matthew's not here tonight, but I'm remiss and it's been a while. I should have done this a long time ago, but I'd like to thank him. He's a very astute business manager, and what I've asked him to do some things, in case you hadn't noticed, we have some new gates and things, and fencing around the football field. Uh, the, I guess we call them soccer field, softball field now. We have gates where we can get in and out. He very diligently attended to getting that done with the Cemetery Commission, with the fencing company, whoever it took, and I'd like to thank him and appreciate it. Makes it easier to use the track without having four-wheelers on it and people jumping the fences and ruling the fence that's there and everything else. So, Mr. Matthew, I don't know if you'll watch this or not, but thank you for your efforts. I have one other issue, and I know that we voted them, and I would like to see those bleachers moved almost ASAP, Mr. Himmelberger. If you could get a hold of Sean, I talked to him at the, at the town meeting, and he's willing to get those out of here for scrap metal. And before the winter flies, and we have, we've got them all piled up, and I'll give Mr. Heatherman and his crew credit for stacking them out here, but they still are a, a danger. So, we need to get them off our property as quick as possible, please. And I only have one other thing, the Wellness Committee, Mr. Himmelberger. Can you enlighten me as to where we are because we're going to have to come up with a report shortly to the state again?
The Wellness Committee?
What's happening with it? Mrs. Scolaro was chairman, who has since retired, and we haven't had any meetings, we haven't had any ongoing dialogue. Can you tell me who's taking over, what's happening, or is the committee still intact? It has to be intact according to state regs.
I'm sorry.
Through the chair?
Yes.
To Mr. Peterson. The committee is intact, and no, the committee has not met, and I will make sure that it does meet, and I will let you know.
Thank you. Very good. To Mr. Peterson's point, we do need a delegate for our upcoming convention. Do we have any nominations for that position? Would you like to nominate anyone or volunteer for that position? Mr. Peterson, you had mentioned you, you had interest in it?
I will do it again. I have no problem. I will be at the convention for the convention, yes.
But I, I understand there might be someone else who's also interested in that.
I'm going to the convention.
Okay. Very good. Do we want to designate a designated, a delegate? I can't even speak tonight. I, I apologize. Could we do that? Does anybody want to nominate a, a delegate?
Usually someone volunteers because I.
We don't usually have two that.
Right. They're going to be both there, so that's fine.
So, I'm, I'm in a position here. So, I had already spoken to, to Mr. Peterson about that that was acceptable to me if he were our delegate, and the reason being because I didn't understand it was an interest, Mrs. Ennis, so I apologize.
No, it's fine. It's fine. No, it's absolutely fine. No problem.
But being, is, is that meet with everyone's approval that?
Sure.
Mr. Peterson is our delegate?
You can be, I would move that she be listed as the alternate anyway, just in case something happens. We need an alternate, too.
I don't know if you, if you want to put her as your alternate, because if something does happen to you, Mr. Peterson.
If the ticker goes, we need somebody.
Right. I don't know if we should get into that.
You'd be rude.
But yes, why don't, why don't we?
I would motion that Mr. Peterson be our delegate with Mrs. Ennis being the alternate, please.
Thank you. Very much. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, can we put that to a vote?
Yes.
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 And I'll also vote yes.